We'll call the August 12, 2019, regular meeting of Peters Township Council to order. Mr. Lauer, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Merrill?
Present.
Mr. Steigel?
Present.
Mr. Currie?
Here.
Mr. Cozer?
Here.
Mr. Berquist?
Here.
Mr. Ball?
Present.
I do not believe that Mr. Lewis will be here tonight.
Let us stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of July 22, 2019.
No move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is special reports, of which there are none. So we move on to audience comments. This is the portion of the meeting where any member of the audience can speak up to five minutes on a non-agenda item. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? Seeing no one, we will move on to unfinished business, of which there is also none. So we will get right into new business. First item being discussion concerning the deer control permit issued by the Pennsylvania Game Commission to McMurray Nursery located at 211 Thompsonville Road.
Yes, we were notified by the game warden that a permit has been issued for deer control at 211 Thompsonville Road. And I invited Daniel Sittler, the game warden for Washington County, as well as Mr. Hober, owner of the McMurray Nursery, to discuss what the nature of that deer management plan is for that property and...
It's Hober.
Hober, excuse me, I know that. Mr. Hober's here in the audience and he can explain to you what his intention is with regard to that.
Mr. Hober, want to come forward?
Is the game commissioner here?
The game commissioner cannot be here tonight.
Well, he's the one who issued the permit.
I understand that, but he can't be here tonight. I invited him and...
Mr. Hober, want to come up to the microphone? So if you want to just briefly explain us exactly what your intentions are there and what the reason for the permit was?
I really didn't have any intentions. This all started way earlier this year. We're getting crushed by deer. We always get crushed by deer, but these years, extra bad. Probably over 100 grand worth of damage. We try everything. We wrap trees, we put nets up, we do everything. It started by me calling, I didn't even, I don't know game, I don't hunt. I'm not a hunter, I'm not an outdoors guy, I'm a gardener. I spend so much time outdoors, the last thing I want to do on my time off is be outdoors, you know? Hunting. Anyways, and this isn't hunting, but I called the, I deal with the Department of Agriculture because I'm an agricultural business, just like on a smaller, you know, scale than Bebop, at Bebop Farms, Simmons, Atrox, any of those people, and they all have the same rights from the state. So I called the Department of Agriculture because that's who I'm familiar with, right? For bug control and crap like that, and I have a permit and they inspect my place. And they tried like heck because years ago, Pennsylvania used to subsidize putting a fence up, a game fence. And I wanted a game fence. And they used to do that. Now I've gotten old enough that I think everything happened last week, you know what I mean? But they actually stopped that program like 10 years ago? They still do it in Ohio, but they don't do it here, where they buy your fence and you put it up and, you know, you put a 10-foot game fence up and you put gates up and everything, you have to cover every inch of it because they'll get in. So anyways, they're researching that and as the spring goes on, we're getting crushed. Every deciduous tree at the nursery is just laid to waste. Every tree I have this high up is missing leaves. And they tear off limbs on apple trees, they've just destroyed the place. I've had four hoop houses that are completely encased in game fencing and they still get in. I don't even know how. There's not even a hole in the morning, but I get in, the apple trees are torn up, the, all the shrubs are laying on their side. So I called the game, not the game commissioner, the Department of Agriculture, Sandy Feathers and Lee Stivers, called me back and said, hey, we can't do anything for you, you should call the game commission. I said, I don't know what that is, but they gave me the number and I called the game commission. And like 15 minutes later, this guy shows up and he's a state officer, what's his name? Sittler. He looks around my nursery, he said, yep, you're getting destroyed. He goes, you, everyone keeps saying a permit, he goes, you have permission to get rid of the deer problem on your nursery. That's the state law. I had no idea. I said, okay, what does that entail? What do I fill out, blah, blah? He goes, no, you're done. We're done, you can do it tomorrow. I've had permission to do this for a month, right? Then he called me a week ago and said, hey, they want to meet with you at the township. Then the township, now they already gave us permission, right? This is a deal between the state and any agricultural business, period. Not between everybody, it's between us. But they put it out there and said, hey, we're going to tell everybody about it because we're going to get complaints anyways if you guys do this, right? At 4:00 in the morning, right? And my answer to that is, that's your job. Deal with it. Say, call the game commission. It's not our responsibility, don't call me, call the game commission. But they sent out a letter and they asked me to be here. Been up since 4:00 this morning, but I'm here. Is it my intention to hunt? No, it's not hunting. It's getting rid of the deer. Right now, if you go to my nursery, I probably got six deer sitting in the middle of the nursery. I can throw rocks at them, whatever I want, they just look at me. If I could afford $77,000 for a fence, I wouldn't be here. I'd be at home getting ready for tomorrow and I'd have a fence up. But, and then I asked the game commission guy, the guy, he's really nice, very helpful, I said, do I need to call you, whatever? He goes, no, it's the state law, that if you, if I come here and see damage on an agriculture property, you have permission to call the deer herd. He goes, that's it. He goes, it's law, I have to give you that permission. And he goes, and I see it, your trees are destroyed. And that doesn't even include the September season coming up where we have to wrap everything because it just gets robbed. But I'm used to that, you know? So I've never hunted a day in my life, nor has this hunting. It's just to call the deer population. And someone said to me, well, yeah, do you think it's because we're developing all that land up the street from you? I'm like, probably, but those are also my customers, so I'm not going to like, I'm not going to be two-faced and complain about the hand that feeds me, you know what I mean? Yeah, they chopped 40 acres of woods down, up off of Hayes Road and between that and Thompsonville. And that whole herd is pushed down into my nursery. But like I said, that's what puts bread on my table, is selling those people trees and plants. So I'm not going to be like a hypocrite and sit up here and say, it's your fault, you know? I hope you build more houses that I can landscape. So that's it. So they gave us permission to do that. It's, and then people have made stupid suggestions like, well, why don't you archery hunt? Why don't you, I mean, if you try to archery hunt deer quickly and wound them and have them running all over the place wounded with, you know, you know, hunters can tell you that, compared to having a deer walk within 20 feet of you with a scope on, like they do, you know, in other places and just drop it? You know, this isn't hunting. This is just to get rid of the problem, to take out half the deer that are roaming through Thompsonville right now.
So explain exactly how the calling will occur.
It has to be, well, per Sittler, per the Pennsylvania Game Commission, it has to be employees of the nursery. It can't be friends of friends of friends. Can't be family members and people like that. It has to be people that work there, okay? You have to have a stand, you have to shoot straight down, I mean, we're talking like from here to that wall, right? Drop the deer, gut the deer, clean the deer, harvest the deer. I have to buy freezers for the deer. I have to buy freezers for the deer and for my employees, you know what I mean, and whatever family. And if you're asking what ever happened, I'm like, no, I don't understand. This is a hill, this all slopes down here, this slips down here, and this is the rose block. It would be right here where the police used to have, and they still do, they're still sitting there, tree stands at the police used to use. I'm hunting my property, right here, on this side, the high side of the property, shooting straight down. Here actually comes through here and then comes down this way and come up the block. So it'd be employees in the nursery, people that work for me, that hunt regularly and have hunted for 30 years. That's basically it. I mean, if we go to my nursery right now, you could probably count five-headed deer sitting in the middle of the nursery, just eating. So...
So you haven't started the calling yet or have you started?
No, so, oh, no. Sittler asked me because they wanted to have, I would have been allowed to, it's state law. It's quite simple. If you're an ag business and you ask for it and they come out and see damage, you can do it. It's not like a permit, it's not like I'm asking. I could have done it already, but I, he asked me to wait because these guys wanted to have a meeting, right? And I didn't know the meeting was, come to a council meeting where I send a letter out to everybody. That's nice and I'm willing to do that, that's why I'm here. That's why I'm here talking to you. But I didn't have to be. I could have been at home shooting deer right now if I wanted to be, but I'm trying to be cathartic with you folks and tell you what's going on, right? You understand that?
I do, sir. We appreciate you coming in.
Yeah. All right, cool. Any other questions?
Thanks, Paul.
Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to speak on this issue?
Yeah, I have a question.
Do you want to come to the microphone?
Mrs. Lee?
No. You have to come up to the microphone, ma'am.
Oh.
Because we're on...
I have questions for Mr. Hawke.
Well, you still have to come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Yeah.
I know the protocol. Name and address, you said?
Yep.
So my name is Sheila Sten and I live at 110 Ammons Drive, which is directly behind McMurray Nursery. My question is, what about the deer that are on our property? That are directly, you know where we live, we're directly behind you.
Yeah, I don't, and I'm not, never met yet, but I know the...
Yeah, you've met me, you've met me several times. You don't remember me, but you've met me.
Okay.
You know my husband, Tom.
Okay.
You know who we are. So what about the deer that are on our side of the fence? Are you going to shoot across the fence?
No. This, if you look where I pointed, to answer your question, if you look back here...
It's very hard for me to see that.
If you look around here, you can see it.
And that's just this terrible map. I know the, I know the property.
That's fine. Well, to answer your question, you live here, I'll be down here, in this direction, down into the rose block. I'm not going to shoot up there, that'd be insane.
So you're shooting your property instead of...
Yeah, there's a fawn here, three of them down there, 30-foot elevation.
And what if, my other question is, and what if you shoot a deer and it doesn't die instantly and it runs over on our property and dies?
That's a question for the game commissioner, yes. You can call him.
So, so you wouldn't be taking care of that?
Oh, sure I would.
So anything you shoot, you're going to take care of?
Sure, I have to. I have to harvest it and provide a red tag. I told you, I'm not shooting.
And I don't know who this is a question for, but does, this is, I'm just throwing this out there, this is a residential neighborhood. I just think there's a concern about having a rifle and shooting.
It's a valid concern.
I would say...
It is a, it still is a operating landscaping business and according to state law, from what we've been told, you're allowed to do deer calling, it's not...
Has anyone seen that law?
I have talked to the game commissioner and what has been described here is exactly what the state of the law is.
Uh-huh.
And it's, to be honest with you, it surprises me, but what's been described is in fact what the state of the law is. I just thought, and I've talked to council about this, I just think it's important that the neighbors know that this is occurring, but, you know, in terms of what's permitted by state law, this is a program that's out there for agricultural uses. And this use, in the eyes of the game commission, is an agricultural use.
And this is already occurring in other places in the township, right?
Well, we have, you know, we have hunting throughout the township on farms, you know? If you go to Simmons Farm, Bebop Farm, they hunt all year round.
This isn't a farm, this is a six-acre parcel in the middle of a subdivision.
And I understand that, but from the state of Pennsylvania's perspective, they don't see it differently. We also, as councils are aware, have a program aimed at deer management. In fact, one of the places that we hunt with Bo is on the own grub property. And we do that during hunting season.
So I do have another question. So it'll be you or your employees?
My employees.
And do they, I mean, if they have no experience with shooting a rifle, I mean, we're just to assume that it's just fine and safe?
Were you listening to what I said?
Yeah, I heard everything you said.
Hunter for 30 years. No, you didn't. 30 years. 30 years...
What was for 30 years?
30 years' experience. One of them runs at Cannonsburg Sportsman's Club.
You said that your...
Employee's been hunting for 30 years.
So that may have been when the air conditioning went on and I couldn't hear you anymore.
So, no, you said...
Because you said you didn't hunt.
No, I don't hunt.
Right.
And this isn't hunting. You keep using that term, if I used it with the game commission, they said it's a call. It's not hunting.
Well, it's shooting a deer.
It's taking out deer, yes, and there are certain rules. You're not supposed to shoot, you know, doe because they could have fawn and you don't want the fawn to starve. You have to shoot buck. There's a lot, there's a lot of...
So you can't shoot the doe or the fawn?
No, you're not supposed to shoot the, no, you're not supposed to shoot the doe because the fawns could starve. That's what he told me. And I had this discussion and all my employees were there, they're going to do this. This isn't some sort of, this is something that would probably occur for 15 minutes every time they did it because we know exactly when the deer come through because I have them on camera. You know what I mean? There's cameras back there. This is something where if they can't shoot them from here to that projector, they wouldn't do. They walk right underneath you, they almost hang like that until they stop.
Oh, I know, they're in my yard, they're at my fence. So there's nothing we can do about it, essentially?
Sure, if you run me a check for 77 grand right now to put a fence up around my yard, I will go home and go to bed.
No, I'm asking the township, there's nothing we can do about it, correct? There's nothing we can do to stop it, correct?
I don't know that. All things, all actions by administrative employees are always subject to appeal, so...
All actions by?
By any administrative employee in a public agency are subject to appeal. But what has been proposed here is in accordance with state law, so...
There's, from what I understand, there's strict procedures that have to be followed. Like if you do shoot a deer, it has to be tagged, is that correct?
They have to show up, tag it, inspect it, you have to have freezers.
The game commission has to show up. I mean, it is regulated, it's not just freelance hunting.
Okay, that's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak?
My name is Shelley Belcher, I live at 201 Thompsonville Road. My family is two houses down on the same side of the road. My question, I understand what's been said, my question is one of notification perhaps. I have children playing, there's a house right next door that shares a boundary with the nursery that has three small children playing. If this is going to happen and I totally, totally feel for him, I can only imagine what the deer are doing to his business. So I don't have really any issue with the calling. I wish it was bow and arrow and not rifle. But is there going to be any notifications so that we would know the days, the times, that we can sort of keep our kids inside? I just get nervous with a rifle, if something hits a rock instead of its intended target, if it would go a different direction, that just makes me nervous, having my kids playing right next door. I don't know if there's any regulation, there's a lot seems after as to what to do with the deer, but is there any...
You're right, there's a lot after, but...
But before, I don't know. I'd gladly keep them inside.
The before, there really isn't anything because obviously, whenever the deer come through is when you're going to take them out.
Except Sundays.
Right, except Sundays.
No, it doesn't matter.
Did they say?
It says right there.
Well, no, because what you're looking at is what I thought the program was at the time. And this is, this is a different program and it's not subject to those normal hunting regulations.
No.
Isn't this called a, aren't they issuing a deer control permit?
Nope.
Okay, so now we're going to hear a gunshot at 4:30 in the morning, like that scares me too. That's a little unnerving to be woken like that.
I don't, I don't, I don't think you hear a thing, but it's not a gunshot. I think people have a lot of preconceived notions of what's going to happen. I told you guys, I don't hunt and I have nothing against it. I eat venison, I do all that kind of stuff. I'd rather go shopping and plant flowers than hunt. I have no interest in hunting. I don't go to Cabela's, I'm not some sort of gun-free. I don't have deer rifles, I don't care. I just know I've lost like 150. I like deer. I like animals, I like being outside, I like seeing animals in my nursery, but when they start destroying everything, you'll never hear, they use low-velocity rifles, 223s, little tiny bullets. It's not like a .30-6 in your uncle doing, you know, deer hunting during hunting season where you hear these loud cracks. It's not like that at all. It's close-up, very close-up deer stand, it's not hunting, it's deer stand, see the deer come underneath you, which normal people use for archery and everything like that, shoot from a very, very close range and drop them.
Well, like I said, I don't have really any real issue with what you're doing. I totally understand its impact on your business. I really don't have an issue. I just, I have that mama's protection of my children who are outside playing. So if I knew the times, that kind of thing, that would make me feel a lot better about all this, I'm sure, with some of the other neighbors as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Mr. Bev, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yes.
So during the day, your employees are working in the yard and they're doing their thing and they're moving things in and out. So chances are, will most of this shooting occur either after hours or, or can you say? I mean, because I would imagine if people are milling around, the deer aren't likely to be there?
No, they're usually dusk and first thing in the morning.
Right.
Like at 4:00 AM or 4:30, 5:00 o'clock in the morning, that's when they start to move about.
So that...
So I would imagine it'd be 5:00. We start at 6:30, I would imagine it'd be like 5:30 in the morning. I would imagine it would take place for maybe 15 minutes. Because they don't stand in one place.
No, they don't.
They combine, they're gone, then we get to work. You know what I mean?
Well, I was just trying to think for Mrs. Belcher's question, you know, where they could kind of figure that it might be most likely to happen, the timeframe.
It would probably might be, I would have to say it would have to be in the morning, right? Actually, I can hardly stand up right now, I'm so tired, so I can't imagine standing anywhere in the middle of the night just to, you know, to hunt deer or shoot deer.
And you say you do have employees who are trained and are competent huntsmen, they're rifle people and so there's no danger about that?
No. I mean, the cost for me to do this too is like I have to buy freezers, I have to buy, pay for butchering, I have to do all this stuff. You're not allowed to throw any of this away.
No.
You have to do it all like that, so I have to do all this. Does Amika dine either or... No, my guys do. I've got 20 employees. They eat like piranhas. Probably won't last a week.
You said they eat like piranhas.
Was the game commissioner supposed to notify anybody or put up signs or...
No.
I specifically asked that question, it's a requirement of notice.
There's no requirement. There you go.
But there you have it. Looks like there's a lot of notice.
All right, well, I know previously we had asked Mr. Hober to come here so we could discuss this, so I, at this point, is there a motion? Are we going to, will we appeal this or not? As far as I'm concerned, the plan, the program is something that's permitted by the state. I don't think we really have any basis, so I'll make a motion that we waive our right to appeal this permit that he's received. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in, oh, sorry.
It's a waiver of appeal.
Right.
We're not appealing.
Right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed say nay.
Nay.
Five one, Mr. Lauer. Next item is award of a bid to purchase rock salt through the Shake Cog purchasing program.
On July 23, Shake Cog Purchasing Alliance opened bids for a one-year contract with two additional option years to supply rock salt to the communities in Shake Cog. There were a number of sets of specifications sent out, there were four responses, but there was only one bid. And that bid was for $82.24 per ton, which represents a 16% increase over the rate charge last year. Now, I don't know that we have lots of options in terms of not awarding this bid. I would note that one of the things that Peters Township has done over the last several years is to also award a bid under the Co-Stars program. Both of these bid processes require us to specify minimum amounts of purchases, so those have already been done. Interestingly, the bid under Co-Stars is dramatically lower than this amount. I still think we want to have two suppliers, one, because we need the volume of salt. The second thing is, the reason why we went to two suppliers, a number of years back, we ran into a situation with a bad winter where we could not get rock salt. So I think what we need to do going forward is to hedge our bet also in terms of pricing by equally splitting what we intend to buy off of both of these programs to somewhat mitigate the impacts of high bids either by Shake Cog or Co-Stars. But that being said, it's going to be my recommendation that council award a contract to Cargill to supply rock salt for the 2019 and 2020 winter season at the specified bid price.
How much are we going to agree to buy?
Um, the minimum...
Because if we're going to get the other one on the tap too and they're cheaper, you know, rather buy...
Those amounts have already been specified before you go out to bid. So we actually, because normally Shake Cog has been lower and more dependable in terms of getting rock salt. The quantities that we've committed to under Shake Cog are actually higher than that we've committed to under, under the Co-Stars program this year.
I'd like to ask another question. I don't remember seeing the full agreement in the past, maybe we did and I don't remember. But under item six, there's a statement that says that the municipality agrees to purchase all of its additional tonnage as needed, up to 125% of the annual estimated tonnage exclusively from seller. Are we concerned about that statement? Because we just talked about having this...
My answer is no.
Okay, great.
And we, again, we're not the only community that has hedged our bets on this, so I'm not concerned about that.
Well, then I'll move that we award a contract to Cargill Incorporated to supply rock salt to the township for the 2019-2020 winter season at the bid price and as per specifications that were submitted to Shake Cog Purchasing Alliance.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is award of a contract for the purchase of a asphalt roller under the Pennsylvania Co-Stars program.
The 2019 operating budget includes an appropriation of $75,000 for the replacement of an asphalt roller. That asphalt roller was acquired back in 1998. We have solicited proposal under the Co-Stars program and Stevenson Equipment Company is prepared to provide us a roller at the cost of $58,970. cost of fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. And it's my recommendation that Peters Township Council award a contract under the Co-Stars program to Stevenson Equipment Company for the purchase of a roller in the amount of fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars.
So moved.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I have a quick question. This is to pick it up at their site in Prospect?
Mm-hmm.
And the number on the statement is fifty-two nine seventy, so is the difference the tax? You said fifty-eight nine seventy, so.
Yeah, hold on one second, I believe that to be right, but let me make sure I didn't make a typographical error.
It is fifty, it does say fifty-two nine seven.
Well, it says in Mr. Hurson, fifty-eight nine seventy.
Ryan showed fifty-two.
But I'm saying on the bid from the company, it's fifty-two. So I'd rather keep the six thousand if it's ours.
Yeah, I got, like, I think I got that number off of Mr. Hurson's.
Yeah, his letter says fifty-eight nine seventy.
Oh, I see what you're saying, Monica.
But the, but the bid says fifty-two nine seventy. Yeah, it can't be the, it has to be, it has to be fifty-two nine seventy.
Is that, is that correct?
It's actually sixty, it's thirty-five fourteen. If we pick it up there, we save eleven thousand dollars. Maybe we can have drive it from there here. If we do it right now, it'll be here by summer.
I would agree with Ryan, I think we should go off the number off, off of this quote instead of the number that's in Mr. Hurson's, and if, if it's different than that, I'll be back to council.
Yeah, I'll amend my motion then to a selling price to be picked up at Prospect Pier, fifty-two thousand nine seventy.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, approval for recording purposes of the Broski subdivision as shown on drawings prepared by Harshman C.E. Group LLC dated June tenth, two thousand nineteen for Ruth Broski, Jared Resanovich, and Katie Anderson.
So this is a simple subdivision, this is the current configuration of those lots, once the subdivision's done, this will be the configuration of those lots? Yeah, we're moving a lot line.
Alright, I move we approve for recording purposes the Broski subdivision as shown on the drawings dated June tenth.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer, next item is resolution amending the Peters Township Act five thirty-seven sewage facility plan so as to provide access to sewage services for seven homes as part of the McClellan Road Turkeyfoot Area Sanitary Sewer Extension.
And that's pretty much my report, this is actually a project that is being undertaken by Peters Creek Sanitary Authority. The motivation for doing it is, there's a new house going in that will require a holding tank, this will eliminate the need for that holding tank. Like I say, this is actually not a project by a developer, but rather a project by the sanitary authority, and it's my recommendation that council adopt resolution eight one nineteen amending the Act five thirty-seven sewage facility plan.
I'll move that we adopt resolution number zero eight zero one nineteen.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is request by Miranda Homes Inc. for a departure of regulations for the Pemberley Manor Plan pertaining to the prescribed length of a cul-de-sac.
So, this is really the first time council is seeing this plan, it will be back to you at some future date if the departures are, are granted for preliminary plan approval. But this particular parcel is the parcel that sits off of Sugar Camp Road and is adjacent to Peterswood Park. We, this is the fourth developer who's attempted to, to develop this piece of property. It, the property by its nature is challenged both in terms of its shape, its topography. You have a substation that's immediately adjacent to it, you've got water, large water lines that pass through it, and then on top of it, you have the township desiring that a road connection be made between Peterswood Park and Sugar Camp Road. And for all those reasons, it's been difficult to come up with a, a development configuration that works. To the credit of Miranda Homes and Gateway Engineers, I think that's in fact what you have in front of you. But in terms of our regulations, it is going to require departures for, for both of the cul-de-sacs. And well, technically, I guess one is two hundred feet, the other is how far from Sugar Camp Road to the end of the long cul-de-sac?
Well, that's seventeen hundred feet.
Seventeen hundred feet.
That's going from Sugar Camp to the end of the cul-de-sac.
And here's the point that I want to, want to make to council is that, that is the departure you would be, be granting, because the road that would connect off of there back into the park, this will be a driveway through the park, this will not be a public road. So, the, the ordinance talks about distance from public roads. It doesn't talk about distance from, from, you know, driveways. But having talked to the, to the fire chief, Chief McLaughlin is of the opinion that this in essence accomplishes what his concern would be, which is to provide a second access within a reasonable distance. So, as a practical matter, although this, this variance is large, what you're really talking about is this cul-de-sac being about eight hundred feet, so you're about two hundred feet over top of a.
Oh, I see, so you're, they're saying the length of the cul-de-sac goes all the way to Sugar Camp?
Yeah, well, if you look at the ordinance, because this is the public road, the length of the cul-de-sac is this. We don't want this to be a public road because it enters into the park and into parking lots. And, and I don't think that's in the interest of, of, of the park to do that.
Area with the parking and the everything, the activity.
The cars back out into the drive, it, it is not. So, where the developer doesn't have a, an inherent right to the departure, we at the same time do not have an inherent right to off-site improvements. And we've been working with Miranda Homes and we actually think there's an opportunity to pursue this on a basis that actually serves both, both of our needs. So, that blue section right there is the public road that they intend to, to put in. This red section is the driveway, the extension of the driveway to the public road that connects back into the park. What they intend to do to the benefit of the township, and we have no way to require this, is to do all the permitting, engineering design, and grading needed to have that, that roadway put in. We would be responsible for paving it, and if the township chooses to have a sidewalk along there, installing that sidewalk as well. They are bringing sanitary sewers throughout this development, as you might expect. At this location, they have committed to not only providing us an easement, but extending this sewer out and catching the sewer line that has been placed in the concession stand at Field Five, which will allow us to eliminate the holding tank that we have out there, and not only provide sewerage service to that particular building, but it may well allow us in the future to extend the sewers from the restroom area that services the picnic area.
Chief McLaughlin reviewed this and he was okay with it, has Chief Grimes looked at it, or has EMS looked at it?
I'll be honest with you, I had not asked them, because what the, the cul-de-sac length is based upon is a fire requirement. The other thing that they intend to do, there's a, a parcel of ground, this is not working now, there's a parcel of ground that's surrounded by blue there that actually, at least a portion of it is fairly level, and up against Peterswood Park, if you, if you've ever been in the picnic area, there's a, a stone storage building, used to be a restroom. It sits immediately adjacent to that, and I think there's actually value to the township. There is a stormwater pond that is located actually on our property, but for, to provide stormwater management to the construct that road, that, that driveway, that pond is going to be designed and sized and located there to be able to facilitate the construction of that roadway. And then finally, one of the things that we're going to do is, that circle up above, they actually have to cross our property with a storm sewer line to get back to a pond that they'll be placing on their property, which is actually on the substation property. So, I think this is a case where by working with the developer, I think not only are their interests being met, but I think quite frankly, the township's interests are being met. And as an adjacent property owner, I think we're, we're being able to fulfill what, the, the goals that we had for the development of this property, so.
The basis of the ordinance limiting the length of the cul-de-sac is for fire safety and the fire chief has signed off on it, I don't see any reason to oppose it, I'll make a motion that we approve the request for departure.
I'll second.
And I'm assuming that that's subject to the conditions that are.
Precisely.
Yeah, okay.
One last question, the cul-de-sacs will be big enough for the fire trucks to turn?
Yes.
So then, I would presume that would also accommodate a school bus if in fact, because these are going to be private residents, I presume there'll be children in this plan.
And, and a decision about whether school buses come back here or not won't, won't be one that we will, we will make, I, I don't know. I, will, the answer to your question is yes, it will accommodate a bus, I don't know whether a bus is coming back there.
And what about the garbage trucks, as Mr. Currie just.
It'll accommodate a garbage truck.
Okay.
Are there any good, are there any traffic calming measures proposed on this road?
There will be.
There will be?
On Bruny, on the main road off of Sugar Camp. We're thinking raised intersections. Raised intersections.
I had another question, and I, I don't even know if it's part of this, this motion or whatever we're dealing with here, but I saw someplace in here, it said that we were gonna pick up the cost of something, is that part of this?
Well, you are, what you're picking up the cost of, that private, that drive will be graded, we are going to pave that as part of our paving program.
Well, the reason I'm saying that is, is that one of the attachments here says the planning commission recommendation, and it says, recommended that we approve the cul-de-sac, and then it says, Miranda Homes contributes seventy percent of the construction cost of Bruny Drive from the intersection with Sugar Camp Road to the connection point of Peterswood Park. So to me, that's that whole thing, the blue and the, the orange.
But if you, but if you.
So who's picking up the other thirty percent, us?
I think what, when, I've asked Mr. Zemaitis to look at this, what I believe that our costs are going to be, to be able to pave that and put a sidewalk in, is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. But that's an off-site improvement, and you have no way to require them to do that.
No, well, who's paying the other thirty percent on this recommendation? That's my question.
Well, what I'm telling you is that if you look at the blue road that's coming in, they're covering the entire cost of, of that road.
Seventy percent.
I think it's.
Yes, and then if you look at the red road, they're, they're covering the cost of engineering, permitting, grading, stormwater management, and what we're going to do is put down the paving and the sidewalk if the council wants it.
But that's not what that recommendation says.
But that's, but that is exactly what that recommend, that, in fact, is exactly implements that recommendation. These are the exact same drawings they were looking at, and what they were saying, and I, I actually think this is more than seventy percent, what they're saying is seventy percent of the total cost of that should be on the developer. I, I actually think that it, that what's, that percentage is actually slightly skewed better to the township's advantage.
Well, and all we're being asked to decide tonight is the departure from the cul-de-sac regulations, right?
So this number, these, these numbers don't mean anything. The thirty and the seventy percent.
Not as far as this departure is concerned.
We're talking agenda tonight is departure of the cul-de-sac.
If I could clarify, since the planning commission meeting, we've agreed to do more of the infrastructure than we discussed at the planning commission meeting, and it's more than eighty percent, it's probably closer to eighty-five. Plus, we're, the sanitary sewer was not discussed with planning commission, we've agreed to do that entire extension.
But we're not dealing with that issue tonight, correct? We're just dealing on whether or not we're gonna give them a variance on the length of the.
One, are you giving them a, a departure? And secondly, wha, under what conditions are you going to, to give them that? And, and those conditions are what's outlined in my report, or what I've discussed here. So, the conditions are completion of the grading to connect Sugar Camp Road to Peterswood Park, including all permitting, the construction of a stormwater retention pond that is capable of, of handling both the private and public section of Ernie Road, extension of the sanitary sewers in Peterswood Park, including the connection to Field Five concession building, extension of the sanitary sewer lines as determined by the Peters Township Sanitary Authority to accommodate the homes along Froby Road, and an easement that comes up Sugar Camp to Froby so that the homes up above on Sugar Camp can also be. And then the transfer of approximately one acre, and what they show on their drawing is actually larger than one acre, but quite frankly, I don't think we want more than an acre because some of that property just isn't usable for us.
So to answer my question, we're not deciding how we're allocating the costs. Well, wait, I want to hear it from the township manager.
Well, the manager's telling you.
If that's part of the deal, I need more information. Like, for example, if, if we're gonna eat part of those costs, cause that's what it says here, seventy percent of the construction cost.
But that is not what's in my recommendations, and what I'm telling you is what we're going to do is what's on those drawings. And they're gonna be responsible for all these items, which quite frankly, and you could ask Mark this, you can ask Gateway Engineers, I think it exceeds, well, exceeds the seventy percent that's in there.
If I could go over this again, make, let me make a little clear. We had put together an estimate for the plan, which, based on what we were going to offer at that time. At that time, it was about a seventy-three split, based on our estimate. Since then, the deal and what the manager's stating is that all grading from parking lot to Sugar Camp, all storm sewers required from Sugar Camp to the parking lot, all pavement and sidewalks, this blue area. The only thing that the township is, is required in this agreement is to put the pavement and the sidewalk.
That's it?
And is that, we have a written agreement to that effect?
If you do this motion, that's gonna be this vote, and they will not be able to move forward with their preliminary plan without conforming to these conditions.
Take all of that together and redo the estimate, it's about eighty-five, eighty to eighty-five percent by Miranda, fifteen to twenty to five.
And you anticipate our cost to be a hundred and thirty thousand?
Hundred and thirty thousand dollars if, if we do the, both the roadway and the, and the sidewalk.
Which is similar to the estimate that I gave you.
So, so is it safe to say that by stating it the way we're stating it, based on the project work they'll do, not a dollar number? They are going to be on the hook for whatever it takes to get that accomplished.
And the only thing we're gonna be responsible for is paving that portion?
And the sidewalk if you want.
And if we want sidewalks.
Yep.
And if we want to put a gate, we'll put the gate.
So, a perfect example of what he's referring to is when they got done with the planning commission, what came back to us before it got to council was, there would be an easement that would allow the, the sanitary sewers to touch our property. We went back to the, the developer, we sent Ed back to the developer, and they're now making that connection over to our, through our property, which. Yeah.
Okay, and one other clarification, there was an email from the people who lived on the other side of Froby from where the new homes are proposed, who want access to sewer. And their lines will enable that.
Yes.
But they aren't going to connect, it'll be up to the homeowners to make the connections.
Actually, not where you're showing, but.
It's up here.
We're extending an easement, a web to Froby.
Okay.
If we have sanitary sewer here, we can extend an easement.
Actually, I think we have a commitment to actually stub out to here.
Because if that's happening, it would, in my mind, be appropriate to enable the rest of the residents if they choose to be able to access that.
Well, if it gets stubbed out here, they may not get a choice, it may be a sanitary sewer project that requires everybody to connect.
Would that be, still be Peters Township sanitary?
Yes.
Alright, I'll review the motion that I made earlier that we approve the request for departure, subject to the five conditions set forth in the manager's report.
I'll second it, the last one.
Yep. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is resolution authorizing the township manager to submit a traffic signal application to PennDOT for the installation of a signal at the intersection of East McMurray Road and Rolling Hills Drive.
I'm just gonna make a motion that we approve resolution oh eight oh two nineteen, authorizing the township manager to submit a traffic signal application to PennDOT for the installation of the signal at East McMurray and Rolling Hills Drive.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer, next item is contract extension with AEC Group for the maintenance of the township computer network.
AEC Group has managed our computer network since we've had a computer network. In two thousand and fourteen, we transitioned from a program where we had a full-time employee who was supported by the AEC Group to a situation where AEC Group provides all support on a contractual basis. They have proposed a five-year extension to that contract. Currently, they are compensated at eighty-three hundred dollars a month. What they're, what they're proposing is what I believe to be a seven percent increase over the services that they currently provide. They are also recommending, and I am recommending, that we increase the ability to monitor certain critical network components that previously could not be monitored remotely, and that's an additional two hundred and forty dollars a month. I can tell you this, the thing about our network, it's always up. The AEC's always responsive. Although we are not a large organization, our network is fairly complex, given the public use in the library, the specialty use inside the police department, and the remote use at locations such as the fire station, the high school, the public works garage, and the, the rec center. And it's my recommendation that we award a contract, an extension of the contract for an additional five years to AEC, with the total cost being nine thousand one hundred and twenty dollars a month.
How, when did we enter into the original agreement?
The original agreement under this plan was two thousand and fourteen, but prior to that, AEC has been supporting our network years and years and years.
I, I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to look at, that's a lot of money every month and.
When they first started with us, we had that employee, and they were billing forty-one fifty a month, based on this, I had asked Mr. Lauer for a rundown of what we paid them. And then when the employee left, it went to eighty-three hundred dollars. It's what, I'm discerning from what you gave me. And we agreed to sixty-four hours onsite a month. And almost every pay run that we do, there's addition. And almost every pay run that we do, there's additional charges. I realize some of them are for things, software, equipment, that they buy on our behalf, and we reimburse them for, I understand that. My question to you is, if sixty-four hours isn't enough, and we need to keep paying them consistently, should we be negotiating? That's one question. Second-
Can I answer that one?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, I think the way the contract is structured, with an hourly rate for, for hours over the amount of hours that are designated, actually works to the township's benefit, because we never buy more hours than we need.
Do you ever leave hours on the table? Because in the body of this, it says you can only carry them into the next month.
No, but what my point is, what they're charging us as an hourly rate is in line with what the hours cost that we're buying. So we're not at a disadvantage by not buying, not committing to more hours. When we initially started this contract, you know, Michael and my concern was that we didn't want to commit to hours that we didn't need, and that's why we settled on two days a week. And to the extent that we need more service, we're only paying for that, those additional hours we actually need, at a rate that's very similar to the, what, what's contained in the base contract.
Two other things, to me, seven percent right up front for five years is a lot, particularly since what you just said, they know our system, they don't have to learn our system. Everything we have right now is pretty much everything they've installed. So there's not really a learning curve, this should be easier for them, not harder.
But it doesn't mean that their people don't get paid more, and then, and then that the services don't cost more. I look at this a little bit different, in that I look at a ten-year span of time, and I'm looking at a seven percent differential. To me, that, that's quite frankly remarkable.
Well, it becomes ten percent if we add the extra two forty, to remotely monit, to rem, but ten percent of a salary increase is a lot of money. So ten percent on a contract is a lot of money, that's why I'm asking.
It hasn't changed for five years.
It is if it's ten percent over the course of five years, why not escalate it over time? I asked you if you negotiated with them at all. Do you think there's an opportunity to negotiate at all?
Well, I think what you have here is a reflection of that, but if council wants me to go back and-
I asked you, I didn't know whether you had a conversation, whether this was the first contract they sent.
No, no, this, this-
I think it's a lot of money. I think it's a hi, high increase for a company who knows perfectly well what we do, and they're comfortable, apparently, with what they do for us. I'm not sure what else is going to happen here, that's going to get bigger. I mean, I don't know what capacity increases we're going to do. If there's something you'd like to-
I just got to tell you, I, I have business with six employees, and this seems like a very attractive rate to me.
And I would assume that the person is assigned here-
And inevitably, in any system, things go wrong. And the key is, when, when your system goes down, how quickly do they respond? So, you're, you're saying they respond quickly.
And what kind of assurances, if something does happen, for, for business interruption? Do they have, what's their response? We've never had a situation like that?
Well, the, the one thing that AEC does is they have a fairly robust program under which, you know, things are backed up, and, and, yeah, but there's no guarantee in this area that one doesn't have a problem. One of the things that I take some comfort in is understanding the skill of the people that are, that are working there. The fact of the matter is, and within Washington County and public agencies, you know, we, we've probably had a half a dozen people who've been subject to ransomware. That's why, again, I like this group, you know, we're one of the early clients, but they represent not only us, but they, they represent, in town, multinationals. And so, I, I think, I, you know, I, I think that these people have demonstrated over time their ability to manage that network.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we award a contract extension with AEC Group for the maintenance of the township computer network.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay.
Nay.
Five one, Mr. Lauer. Next item is payroll and bills.
I want to make note in the bills that, as council had directed, when we had received the invoice from the ambulance service in April, we did not pay that because we were asking for additional information from the ambulance service. One of the things that you would have seen in, you would have seen in last month's department reports, is the new information that's being provided by the ambulance service. What's on top of what's being distributed is what we have received in the past, which you can see is simply a list of the number of calls and where those calls go to. What we're now receiving is the kind of performance information that I think now allows council to be in a position to evaluate how well the ambulance service does its job. And, you know, one of the things that, having worked with Mr. MacArthur and Mr. McMurray, that I believe is that, on the face of it, I think the ambulance service has a good story to tell, and, and, for some reason, previously, they had been reluctant to provide this information in this format, but now, we, we can see everything from response times, we can see, you know, where the location is, where people are being picked up. So like, for instance, I know Mr. O'Curry has expressed concern about skilled nursing facilities, and what does that mean for ambulance service? Well, for the first time, you can tell how many of these calls are being generated at, at those locations.
Well, I think, I think you missed, completely missed the, the concern. The concern was the financial accounting of where that eighty-seven thousand dollars was going, we never saw an audit. It was a financial question we had, not a, not a response question.
Well, I could tell you, it's been both, as, as far as what I've heard from council. And in my opinion, I think this is a step in the right direction, and I think we ought to recognize that. I can tell you, I think that, that if council chooses not to pay that bill at this point, I think you're going to put the ambulance service in a very difficult position, because one of the things that's happened is, they've processed since the beginning of the year, every senior citizen bill on the basis that they're a subscriber, and if that's not the case, I don't know how they go back and adjust that. If in fact, what you want and are not interested in providing subscriptions, unless you have financial information, I think we ought to let, let the ambulance service know that as part of the budgeting process, so that in fact, they can begin the beginning of the year, and make a decision as to how they want to bill people.
This question came up during budgeting, I raised it personally, because it's almost a hundred thousand dollars that we give them at the beginning of the year. The fact that they give us this accounting is lovely, so now we know where everybody's going. But it doesn't really answer the question, because we want to know, A, first of all, they're a nonprofit, we've made an agreement with them to donate based on service, services they provide. They don't have detailed financials, they've never given us that, that document that they gave us is not detailed enough. Second, they don't have an audit, and they're not listed on GuideStar, they're nine nineties.
Oh, their nine nineties are online.
Well, their audit isn't online. So the bottom line, in my opinion, if they don't want to give us that, there's a reason. So as far as I'm concerned, I, we're not, we didn't say we won't fund them, I just want to see what they're doing with the money. Because if the VFW and the ambulance are so tied together that the money's not being used directly for what, what we're donating it for, there's a, there's a fiduciary responsibility that we're sure the money's going where we're donating it for. It's not a bill that they're giving us, per se. We agreed to that, based on the service. So that's all I'm trying to get to the bottom of, and they haven't given us anything, to my opinion, that demonstrates that.
Well, the thing that we know from their nine ninety, as well as the discussion with them, is that when you look at their nine ninety, the VFW and the ambulance service are all contained on, on, on one form. It is not, there is not a separate entity that exists out there that is the ambulance service, it is the VFW. So the question, in, in my mind, that you really get to is, does the township, for the love of a hundred thousand dollars, want to be in the ambulance business? And, and I don't think that's something that we want to do.
As far as I'm concerned, Mr. Lauer, I don't think we want to be either. Then, as far as, we can solve the problem. At the end of every month, send them a check for how many transports they did and can document that were for seniors, who haven't paid their membership. That, then we meet our obligation to them. They just don't get the hundred thousand first thing in January.
Well, they don't get the, the hundred thousand first thing in January anyhow, they, they get it normally, this, this bill has been held up since April, waiting for this information.
Right, normally they get it in April, first quarter.
I, I just don't understand, we're giving them, which is more than we did last year, ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars.
That's, what, that is what we gave them last year.
It's exactly, I thought it was a little bit lower.
No.
Okay. So that's supposed to represent what?
That represents a membership, a, a membership in the ambulance service for all senior citizens.
Well, how much is a membership?
It's not, it's fifty-five dollars or sixty-five dol, if you're, if you want to buy a membership.
Well, we would have to have like, a lot of senior citizens here, to get up to not, almost a hundred thousand dollars.
And you do?
Yeah, but when, but when you look, but when you look at-
I'd be one of them.
But when you look at, when you look at what they're giving us here, like, this is the, the, this is the May report, okay?
That's, this is a-
They transported, year to date, two hundred and fourteen senior citizens.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Why, why are we paying twenty-five or thirty percent of their budget, when they're only transporting, I think last year it was like three hundred, almost four hundred? I mean, that, that's on a per-person basis, that's ridiculous. We're subsidizing their, first of, listen, we're subsidizing their business, okay?
I believe that to be the case.
Without any control of cost containment or anything. So I mean, how, how's that fair to us? We have absolutely no input. That is not fair. And if they don't like it, that's too bad, we'll bid out the services to somebody else. I'll bet you we'd get it for a hell of a lot more than a hundred thousand dollars.
You mean the cost of the ambulance service?
Sure.
But the ambulance service still bills. Every, everybody who's over sixty-five is on Medicare. So the, well, the bottom line is, they're also billing for their services.
That's not right.
It's not just, they're not only get, they're only, not only living on our money, the money the township gives. They're billing for services, they're getting paid, they're getting memberships.
This hundred thousand dollars is a pit in comparison to what it costs to run an ambulance service.
Yeah, but if you back up what we give them, they're in the hole every year, right?
Oh, I, here's what I believe, and, and because their funds are co-mingled, this is difficult to, to be able to ascertain.
Well, we want them to un-co-mingle it, I think that was the whole point. What are they deriving out of the ambulance service versus the VFW? I mean, how hard can that be? If they can give us all these great detailed statistics that you're telling us they're giving us now, how hard is it for them to say, we made this many trips and blah, 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 and this is what it costs? I mean, I don't know. I mean, I understand we have to have an ambulance service, I'm okay with that, but I, I just think that where you get, you're not getting any input from them, information from them, as to what their costs are, what they're actually doing. We're just stroking them a check for a third or twenty-five percent of their budget every year. Right? And now we're going to have this new place that they're building down there on, on Valley Brook Road, and those people are going to be paying an arm and a leg to live there, and we're going to be subsidizing them. How, how are we going to address that? That doesn't seem fair to me, that somebody's paying all that money to live in this new, you know, center down there, and it's, it's buku bucks, and yet, the, the taxpayers of, of the township have to subsidize those people as well? I mean, this is ridiculous, it's out of control, and without information, how are you going to know what to do?
But what's the alternative, Frank? Are we going to do it ourselves? Think how much it's going to cost if we do it ourselves?
I don't know that.
There are other ambulance services.
Because we've never looked into it.
I can guarantee you, it's going to cost more than this check. Not saying that we should stroke the check, I'm just saying.
The EUC alone is, is going to cost you a hundred grand a year.
Well, you're already paying them, you're already responding to a good chunk of the calls.
I was going to say, we respond fire department, police department, and ambulance, and I'd, I'd wager to say, the fire and the police get there first sometimes.
Well, they do get there first sometimes, and that's the way the system is designed.
I, I'm not arguing with that.
And the thing is, you know, I, I would agree with you that we have paramedics with inside the fire department, but if you assign them to ambulance service, they're not available for fires, and we will increase the staffing inside the fire department to be able to do this. Again, I, I just don't see that's in the interest of the township.
What is the problem? Why have they told you that they will not show us their financials?
No, I think what they're telling you is, and what, this is what they told you before, when they did provide you those financials, is that there is one, one organization, it's the VFW, these items are co-mingled, and that they're not set up to do that. And again, if, if, if what you want to do is to tell them point blank, without those on January, we're not going to provide the, the senior citizen subscriptions next year, I think that's fine, but I don't think you can do that in the middle of the year, when they have relied upon this, as they have in the past, as a source of revenue.
But you're making it sound like we didn't have the conversation, we've been asking about this since we talked about the budget in October. We told you that we, we, council, felt that we wanted them to bring us more information, and now it's August, it's not our fault, because they haven't been forthcoming.
Regardless of whose fault it is, the, what's going to happen, to me, is very clear. The impact will be very clear, and I don't think that's in the interest of the community. But it's his council's decision, I, it's my recommendation though, in terms of the, the, the payment of the bills that, that council provide for the senior citizen subscriptions for this year.
I thought we already agreed to that.
I think, every bill needs to be approved by council. So, that bill sits there, and it's for council to decide whether or not you want to approve it.
All right, let's do this first. Mr. Ball, did you review all the payroll and bills?
When I review the payroll and bills, I find them in order and move that they be paid.
With the exception of the ambulance bill.
With, with the exception of that.
All right, I'll second that, everyone in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay. Six zero on that, Mr. Lauer, now let's talk about the ambulance service bill.
I, I move that we pay the ambulance service bill.
And I'll second that. I will second that under the condition that someone from the ambulance service is at the next meeting, where they will get instructions from us as to how we're going to do this moving forward. I also, I'm not comfortable with the fact that they apparently have been running this business, and I'm sure they, I don't suspect that there's any fraud going on here, I'm just, I, I know from representing entities like this, that what happens is, you, you have people who are volunteers, and they're trying to maintain budgets, and so I completely understand why the VFW and the ambulance service have everything co-mingled, because I'm sure it's probably the same volunteers that are doing both, so that's just how they did it. Whether or not that's the correct legal way to do it, probably not, but I'm sure that's how they've been doing it. But, I don't think there's any question, they've been relying on this money for this year, and I think if we come back now and try to put conditions on their getting the money this year, I don't think that's necessarily fair to them, but I think for next year, moving forward, I think they absolutely should be instructed that we expect from this, for twenty twenty forward, a detailed financial statement just for the ambulance service itself, not the VFW.
Yeah, they got to just carve that out.
Precisely, and for the, on that condition, I will second Mr. Burke's motion. So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay.
Nay.
I have an aye.
That's three, three. So it fails, and put this on the agenda for next meeting.
I'll invite Mr. McMurray and-
How's it three, three, two?
It's four, two. I thought you all three voted nay.
I just said aye.
No, you said no.
Yeah, we heard an aye, it's four, two.
Okay, it's four, two.
Is the ambulance service a separate legal entity?
What's that?
I said, is the ambulance service a separate legal entity?
No, it is not.
So it's under no obligation to, you know, to, to file its own income tax or-
It, well, Mr. Ball was asking whether it's a separate legal entity, it's not, and, and as a result of that, I, I, the, the reason why you see this combined nine ninety is that the VFW is the only entity, so-
The only ones that can file it, I, this is, this is my point, I know it's not a legal entity, I just asked, it's a- It's a, they, they, they can't file a 990 because they are not an entity.
Yes.
And they are part of, they're a division of the VFW.
But what they can do, if they chose, is to segregate their accounts, segregate their accounts, and that, and combine them.
The ambulance service is just a part of the VFW, it's not its own separate.
Correct, that's as I understand.
And they, they very well could segregate their own costs. They, it's, it's simply creating a ledger, that's, that's all.
So this, this is a public service message to my little girls who sometimes watch these meetings. See what happens when you scream in daddy's ear, daddy cannot hear Mr. R. Curry say yea or nay.
It's their fault.
Hey, Paul, there was an issue that we talked about, related to this, about the building and who owned it. Because there was a lease on one of those, remember, there was a lease on one of those financials? Did we, I, I know we figured it out, but I can't remember what it was.
And I don't remember what the answer was, and I'll get you the answer again.
Well, I think if they're going to come in.
Okay.
Hey, Paul, similar to, I think it's been a few months, I'm still waiting on a report on how we would go about but, uh, billing insurance for BLS response of vehicle accidents.
And the, um, the fire department is looking into that.
All right, moving on to correspondence. Anything we need to discuss in our correspondence, Mr. Lauer?
No.
I would have to call attention to the letter from the residents. The email from the residents, it's under correspondence, I called it a letter. Asking about 214 Valley Brook Road, our favorite. Our favorite location, right at the intersection of Route 19 and Valley Brook. And I would say that, I agree.
Demolition ongoing there?
Demolition's moving along so fast, it's amazing.
So you can give us an update on that next.
Did he do work an hour there?
We have not moved forward with, um, uh, getting quotes for demolishing the building while he was working. What I will tell you is, our observation is that there was initially some work done, but that's now stopped. We still don't have any additional information with regard to the building permit or the site plan, despite his representations at, at the meeting. So, you know, again, we're in a position where I think we need to be taking action to tear the building down.
Immediately.
He's demonstrated that he won't be able to do it.
Put it on the agenda.
And secondly, I, I, I was reading the Washington County Peters Township element of tax liens, and was, which, which building of his has the tax lien?
I don't know, he periodically, all of his buildings have been subject to liens, so I don't know which one there's a lien on.
Because I couldn't determine that, whether it was the building that we're trying to get torn down, or whether it's the one that he's currently renting. But either way, it was on the list.
Yeah.
Paul, can we put that on the agenda for the next meeting again?
In what regard?
Putting out bits for demolition.
Actually, we have authorization to do it, and we'll just go out and do it.
Let's get it done.
Yeah, I think council voted on it.
Again, there hasn't been any work there in a while.
Yes.
All right. All right, does any member of council wish to discuss any of the various committee meeting minutes? Hearing no one, let's move on to miscellaneous. First thing, zoning hearing board report.
Um, in your docket is a zoning hearing board report about, um, issues that are coming up in front of the zoning hearing board. I don't believe any of these warrant council taking a position, but.
You got the, the August one, there's a gentleman that owns a vacant lot on, uh, Phoenisha Road, and our ordinance is written where the setback applies to both Phoenisha Road and the private right-of-way in the back, and he's asking for relief off of that right-of-way in the back, and we don't feel it's a problem.
I thought it seemed like a problem to me.
And the other one is.
Another electronic message sign.
We have two homes on one lot, and we're trying to get that separated onto two lots, and it requires a variance of a tenth of an acre, because they can't achieve the half an acre. We feel that that is de minimis.
And how long have those homes been there? I'm guessing a long time.
Since the forties and fifties.
See, also, we got another electronic sign to look forward to.
Well, they pulled it.
They tabled it.
Oh, did they?
He will be back then. He will probably be back.
Okay, next item is the 2019 bond issue.
Everyone on council would have received this report from Tennessee. I, I do think there's a couple things that I would like to point out that are contained in that report. First, when we went to market, the, the bond market was at a, a fifty-two week low, so I think we went to market at the right time. The other is, and we've reviewed this with council previously, this report includes the rating from S and P, and I think it has, um, many wonderful things to say about the township's financial position. One of the reports that's in here that I do think is kind of noteworthy, Fox Chapel Borough, which is also double-A plus rated, went to market around the same time we did. And, um, there, although their, um, bond issue was smaller in size, it was very similar in terms of the, the length, the term of the issue. And in this particular case, the advantage, I think, of a competitive sale over negotiated sale becomes obvious. And that's even, not only when you look at, um, what the yields were on these issues, but when you look at how our issue on that date that we issued it, and the, the date that they issued, how it compared to triple-A rated bonds, the township made out, um, uh, much better. In fact, if you were to apply their rate, rates to our bond issue, our overall debt service cost would have increased by one million, four-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. So I think that's a, that's a, um, argument in favor of competitive versus negotiated sales. And then finally, you know, if, uh, one of the things that's included in here is our cost of issuance, and, and I will tell you, and this is a pat on the back to Mr. Smith, what we get billed by our solicitor is his actual cost of the work that he does. In many municipalities, bond council and, and, uh, local council, they mirror their rates, and those are substantially higher than, um, what we would pay to the local solicitor. So I think John, to his credit, bills us appropriately.
Okay, the next item under miscellaneous is the WCA TO Annual Convention.
Just want to let you know that's occurring. If anybody's interested in attending, let me know, and we will sign you up for that.
Can't be more exciting than a SHA-COG meeting.
It's actually not bad, I went to one.
I, I have.
Over the years.
I have another miscellaneous item.
Oh, please, Mr. Lauer, proceed.
Um, we have, continuing to work on the survey with regard to the aquatic center. I think that, um, we have sent these changes out to everyone. I believe the, this, this, uh, survey now mirrors what councils had been asking us to do. I'd like to be able to go ahead with this. I think the thing I would remind you about, the intention of this survey is a market survey to determine whether or not we can generate sufficient revenues if we were to, in fact, construct an outdoor aquatic center. That's what this is trying to get to, as opposed to whether or not a pool should be included in the master plan for the park.
I reviewed the report and sent some comments to you. For the rest of the group, um, I think that when we solicit people who don't live in the township, it's pretty hard to gauge what the actual survey is saying. You know, if you don't live in a township and don't have to pay for something, you know, why the hell wouldn't you think it was a great idea? I think that, uh, that, um, you know, that's going to skew, uh, some of the, some of the results. I think that, uh, um, that this whole thing, as Mr. Lauer said, is all focused on, uh, an outdoor pool. And I don't believe that we really want to spend this amount of money for an outdoor facility that we're going to use for three months a year. And there's nothing in here that requests anybody's opinion on an indoor pool.
I think they did a.
No, it was one, one small question. But I mean, it, it, you know, you got seven-hundred questions on one, and, and, I mean, it's, it's like, okay, uh, you know, it's, the, here's the answer, so, you know, let's, let's find some data to verify our answer. It's a skewed, it's a skewed survey. And, uh, uh, I think that, uh, it's realistic that respondents should be more committed than somewhat likely on, on attendance and use. I mean, somewhat likely to me says, you know, I really don't have an opinion. So, uh, I mean, just overall, I really am not impressed with the quality of the survey. You know, we keep saying, you know, here's our, this is a great survey, so I don't think that it gets to the question. I think it's a biased survey. I think it's, it's just, it's a, you know, substantiating, uh, you know, a predetermined answer. There's nothing in here about indoor. And I don't really see anything that would, that would comprehend the fact that in addition to all the other pools that are listed here, they're building two pools in a health club in South Hills Village, which is going to certainly impact what we're doing here. So as far as I'm concerned, I really am not interested in going ahead with this survey.
Well, I agree with some of the comments Mr. Ball made, because I think there are questions that are misleading. If you're not a Peters resident, and they're quoting you numbers that you're asking Peters to react to as far as membership fees, I thought we were going to make a differentiation between Peters residents versus outside residents. So if you quote this number to them, you sure.
And I would agree with you that the numbers for the non-resident rates have to be added for the non-residents.
Right, and as far as the question about indoor, outdoor, or whichever, there is one, but I agree the not at all somewhat more interested and much more interested are kind of a very ambiguous group of responses.
You know, that, do you want a pool for three months a year, or do you want to be able to use it for twelve months a year? That's not said in here, and that's the essence of the whole decision.
So if.
I, I understand what you guys are saying.
Yeah, I mean, the point, at the end of the day, you're never going to get a survey that is.
They're, they're basically.
That, that's perfect.
They're never perfect.
Yeah, but you don't want.
I have no experience or knowledge of surveys.
But I agree, though, with Mr. Ball and Mrs. Merrill that there need to be some changes made to this, and. Has anyone else given?
We keep pushing this off, pushing it off.
Well, I know, I mean, that's, that's a problem. I mean, and, and we don't ask, you know, the other thing we don't ask, we ask, would you be willing to pay, you know, how likely is it you'd be purchase a family season membership for? You know, and then they have like family of two, family of three, family of four, family of five. Well, there's nothing in there that says, uh, about your taxes going up. If, if you're, you know, how much of a tax increase are they willing to incur above and beyond these fees? Because there's going to be, unless we could somehow establish that we can break even on the, on the operations.
Well, that's, that's the whole purpose of the survey, is to find out whether you can generate enough revenue. The idea, when, when we talked about this before, the idea wasn't a survey to say whether or not there'd be a pool, because that question's answered inside the master plan. The question is, at this point in time, if we were to build a pool, would it generate enough revenue?
Would they come?
To do this, and, and.
I think we're making dreams.
The basis upon which these numbers, you know, what, what they had originally done, they did this price sensitivity thing, and that's why you ended up with all these questions. So when council said, "No, we want this to be simple and clear," what these rates are that are in here are the rates that are in Cranberry Township, a pool that has operated for many years successfully at these rates, that pays for itself. So if you're not prepared to pay these rates, then I don't think we could support a pool in, in town. That's why you ask this question.
Cranberry subsidizes that pool a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
They do not subsidize the operation of the pool. What they do, and the same thing is true here.
They paid the bond.
They, they have to pay the capital cost. That pool actually generates not only enough money to cover the operating cost, it generates a small reserve. And I, when I say small, I mean a small reserve. So the question is, can it cover its operating cost?
From a population comparison, I believe that Cranberry has a higher resident population than we do.
And again, that's what I think, based upon the percentage of people willing to join a pool at these rates, you're going to be able to extrapolate whether or not the pool can pay for itself. That's what this is trying to get to.
All right, listen, I, I, I mean, I think everybody's made some really valid points, and as far as, um, you know, Mr. Ball and Ms. Merrill and all that. But, but I, I tend to agree with, with Mr. Berkquist. I mean, you know, we can't just keep kicking this can down the road. I, I'm not a big fan of surveys, because I, I really don't think they're worth much. But, but at least whatever information we can glean from them, we should have. And we, we need to like, get this to a point and either say yea or nay.
We're micromanaging.
Or move on.
But can I, can I do this? Can I get together with Mr. Ball and see whether or not we can work out questions with regard to an indoor pool?
That's fine with me, but I don't think we should be like kicking this can down to the next.
And, and then we'll get this to them and allowing them to administer the survey.
One thing before we move off of this, restate how they're going to do this survey, because the last I heard, it was a phone survey. And then you just, right, when you sent the email to us, adding this to the agenda, you talked about them mailing something.
Well, here's the thing. Council, council at the last meeting expressed concern that if you were to do this by a phone survey, that people seeing campus market research or a number they didn't recognize may not answer the phone. So I went back to them and asked them whether there was an alternative that we could do that would ensure we get participation by Peters Township residents. And so what they intend to do is to have us draft the letter asking people to log in to do an online survey. That letter would be signed by Mr. Cozer or myself. There would be a code so that only one person per that letter could respond, and in that way, get individuals to respond who might not otherwise respond when they see something from a survey company. They'll see a letter from the township.
Okay, and if, in fact, someone gets that who does not have the ability to respond online, will that be an alternative, a phone call? How would they handle?
Hadn't got there, but I, but I can tell you this, if someone cannot respond online, we can include in the letter that we can assist them in that, because they certainly can come to the library to do that.
That would be fine.
They could come to the municipal building.
Because there may be people who don't have that kind of service, so you don't want to eliminate that population. And, and they'll keep, and will they continue to try to reach the two-hundred-and-fifty? Because we think.
They're going to over-survey so that in fact, they make sure they get two-hundred and fifty.
Because we're not happy, some of us aren't happy about two-fifty. I, I didn't vote to do this in the first place, so I still think it's a waste of time.
All right, so Mr. Lauer and Mr. Ball are going to get together to.
This week.
Work out the revisions, and you'll send them to us then. All right.
We've got to get this thing moving.
Yeah, we're, well, I'll get together with Mr. Ball, I'll certainly, with what we're doing, and we'll move forward.
Okay.
All right, anything else under Mr. Miscellaneous, Mr. Lauer?
No.
Anything any member of council wants to see? Yes, Mrs. Merrill.
I do have a question. In the course of the, um, land deal on Valley Brook Road with Mr. Robinson, there was to be a swap of land.
Yes, that hasn't occurred yet.
Okay, that was my question, has that occurred yet?
That has not occurred yet.
Okay, so, but he has been moving forward, doing all his business, so perhaps we should move forward or swap a land?
He's only been, he's only been doing demolition, um, he needs to come in and have a.
He's been doing some grading too.
But he, well, that, that grading, demolition, um, he needs to come in with a site plan. That has to go through the planning, uh, commission.
Well, I just was, you know me, I'm crossing those Ts and daunting those Is.
All right, any member of council have anything for the next agenda? Anyone else have anything for the good of the order? We have an executive session?
Yes, we do.
All right, meeting adjourned.